I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Stans, one nation under God, in its soul with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is public hearing for additional appropriation and Ms. Abbott, would you please, do you like to talk to that?
So council had its first hearing on this ordinance at the last meeting. This is going to allow for an additional appropriation in the TIF allocation fund and the Parkland Escrow Fund. The requirements are that council adopted ordinance, hold a public hearing. So tonight we're asking you to have the public hearing, hear what anyone might have to say, then close the public hearings. Later in the meeting, you'll be asked to have, to consider the ordinance and adopt it. If it is adopted, the appropriations will be in effect immediately.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we'll open up the public hearing for additional appropriations, and that's the only subject that that public hearing is for. Is there anyone that'd like to come forward and speak regarding the additional appropriations? I'll ask one more time, is there anyone that'd like to come forward and speak in the additional appropriations? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing and we'll open up the main public comment section. We kindly ask that all those in-person public comments is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes, and we will refer questions to the appropriate department or staff to follow up with a response. Public comments, they also be submitted electronically. If you have a question or comments on an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email those questions to the clerk treasurer, Wendy Miss, at Milister email. All right, with that, anyone like to come forward into the public comment section? Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Hoss Adamy, live at nineteen oh one Fisher Street. So just with most Munster residents, we support the Munster PD, and I do support making sure that Munster PD has the appropriate equipment and training that they need to do their job well and safely. So I'm just asking the question, you know, it's twenty vehicles, almost two million dollars. Is, was there discussion on, since this isn't a budgeted item, I believe, right? Was there a discussion on purchasing twenty together at one time? Is that good? Is that bad? I'm just thinking like long-term, are twenty cars gonna go out of service, hit end of life all at one time? And so then it will be purchasing another twenty vehicles. Does it need to be staggered? What's the cost of maintenance? And are there any like service level agreements that we can have with Ford to try to get their kind of the protections and warranties up, just so it's, you know, just looking at total costs. So there's purchase costs and maintenance costs. And so just hoping that there was some research and discussion on that. So it's not like a recurring thing every, you know, five to ten years, dropping two million plus on new vehicles. Try to spread it out a little bit. That's it?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Got it, Matt, where you go.
I will, thank you.
I do.
That map I gave you is a map of my subdivision. Why I'm here?
Your name, please, and your address. Thank you, thank you.
Greg Starzovich, ninety-five oh one Cottonwood Drive.
Thank you.
So I brought that map so you could understand where I'm talking about. It's just south of Frank Hammond School. It's in between Forty-Fifth and Franlin Parkway. I want to talk about the safety of our students that go to school, that have to walk down Elzalia, Camelia. They have to get on the buses and exit the buses on that street. And these two streets are like super highways now. And that's all from the Forty-Fifth job that's been several years ago. That's done and over. Now let's fix the bad consequences from that. It was great for the town, the revenue and all that. But as far as my neighbor is concerned, these two streets have become highways. The zone is an old zone because it was a closed subdivision, twenty-five miles an hour on all the signs. You'd be hard pressed any time of the day to find anybody doing that. But on Camelia Drive, it's like Forty-Fifth. Azalea is a little bit slower. Something needs to be done about it before some kids get hurt. Like I said, they stand on the street corner there to be picked up by the buses. They walk down these streets on both ones. Stuff needs to be done, or there's gonna be some accidents. And we don't want any kids to get hurt. So it's a chance for you guys to get together and straighten this problem out.
Certainly.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Dave Piniak, seventy-eight thirty-nine Monroe Avenue. I have minor little thing here.
What was the address, please?
Seventy-eight thirty-nine Monroe Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. I believe that, I mean, minor, but in twenty nineteen Munster used to have ordinances which pretending of keeping fall. And it seems like they were changed for the residential neighborhoods. There's currently no restrictions on the number of chickens or type of chickens. There's no restrictions on keeping fall off of private property or destroying landscaping as it go to their houses. There's no restrictions on the amount of noise it can make in the morning. I'm just respectfully requesting that the council review that ordinance. It's not gonna affect many people, but it affects me because I'm right next door to them. And they love to make a noise during the summer and droppings all over without any fencing. So I'd just like you to look into that, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. My name is Matt McDonald. I live at ten thirty-six Azalea. I think I'm in your ward. Jonathan, we all support the police. We support our community. I question the purchase of twenty vehicles for two million dollars at this stage of what we have going on here at the town council with the departure of our town manager and secretary, Department of Public Works. That to me does not look like we're acting in good faith. We support the police. We support the town council. Are you, are you listening? Are you on your computer?
Listen.
Okay, you should, all right.
Mr. McDonald, please be civil and taking notes.
Okay. I would question the appropriation of two million dollars from our TIF fund to purchase twenty vehicles. We have residents here that you laid off that will no longer have health insurance in a matter of weeks. And you're gonna, you're gonna purchase two million dollars for vehicles without any sort of discourse? I find that highly suspect. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening. Steve Tilowitsky, eighty-eight oh eight North Cottin Avenue. Listening to some of the comments, I wanted to offer that I know something that we did in the previous council, or we tried to do, and COVID kind of got in the way was early on in the term to come together and cook up a sort of strategic plan and vision of the council that could be presented to the residents. Because people in town really want to get behind their leaders and understand what they're doing, be able to support, question, also hold accountable the plans that are underway. But we need to be able to see what the vision is, otherwise it gets left to conjecture or the latest thing that was said in the campaign, for example. Some of the questions that I'm hearing is, you know, the Ridge Road project that ought to be stopped. That's a seventeen million dollar opportunity cost for the town, including one point three million in the study fees, the engineering study fees that would have been repaid by that money. There's obviously talk about two million in police cars, or one point nine right now. So this money starts to add up as it's coming from the TIF funds, stands at about twenty-three million according to the treasurer's report. You know, we're a couple of months in, three million are coming off of the TIF funds. That took twenty years to build up. It's also used for infrastructure, water, economic development. So people will start to maybe get the wrong idea if they don't know what the right idea is of what's the plan for what this council would like to build. So also with the hiring of the new town manager, I'm glad that we have very competent hands of Ms. Abbott later if that's approved. We'll be here until August, so it sounds like you're putting a real search out. I think it'd be helpful for the town manager, incoming town manager, to also understand what's the vision of this council and what will they be up to for their period of service here. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. There anyone else that'd like to come forward in the opening of the public session?
Don't seem to be too busy. I wanted to say that it would be nice
if you placed me into the microphone, I'm sorry.
It would be nice if you would use the town news that you can use. Ask your constituents what they think about the traffic in their area. And I think you'll get a lot of good responses from the people, especially around the schools. Ask the teachers, ask the bus drivers. It's getting a little wild out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward this time? Asking one more time, is there anyone like to come forward in the opening of the public session? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close that, and that takes us up to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion. Approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have support. There's a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Miss, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to old business. And the first item is the ordinance nineteen thirty-two, additional appropriation, which we had the public hearing on tonight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance nineteen thirty-two as presented.
We have a second.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Four zero.
That takes us up to item B, ordinance nineteen thirty-three, budget reduction. And we've received some information from the state. Ms. Abbott, would you like to comment on that?
So we received our certified budget in January. We reviewed all the funds. And we find that some funds, the ending balances for December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, were not where we had thought they would be. And so we are asking to take a reduction in listed funds in order to balance budgets moving forward throughout the year.
Thank you. We have a motion here?
We have a motion. We have a motion.
We do not have a motion.
We do not have a motion.
I make a motion to accept ordinance nineteen eighty-three, or nineteen thirty-three, an ordinance for the reduction of the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to new business. And that brings us item A, ordinance nineteen thirty-four, updating Centennial Park hours.
This was discussed last council meeting and it's changing the hours only at Centennial Park from six AM to dusk, the vaguer closing time of dusk to six AM to ten PM. And this is the ordinance that makes that change.
Do we have a motion here?
I like the motion to hear ordinance nineteen thirty-four on the first reading instead of second reading in the March, what, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Or this the second?
This is the first one.
This is the first one. Okay, I'll second that motion. We have a motion, we have support. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Miss, would you call the roll?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. It takes us up to ordinance nineteen thirty-five, which is rezone ordinance for the seven oh six Ridge Road. And this came to us from the zoning plan permissions. And this is changing their zoning. Yes, I'll be looking for a motion. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the presented rezone ordinance for seven oh six Ridge Road.
We have support.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I was pleased to be on the planning commission when this met for us. We had a number of residents come in, and I was happy to see that they were able to voice their concerns. And we were able, in my opinion, to show them that the zone met their concerns. As a result, I feel that we were able to satisfy those individuals. So I'm pleased to support this motion for the council tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Next, we have item number C, which is extension of the contract for the tree services. And background on this, the March second, twenty twenty, tree services were awarded, given to Arbor Care. And tree service on April thirtieth, twenty twenty, they resigned as the tree service contractor, Dave's Tree Service, but given the contract. And they, we're looking to extend that contract through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one twenty-four as is presented, authorizing the extension of tree removal services contract with Dave's Tree Service through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, please call the roll.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Four zero.
That takes us to resolution twenty-one twenty-five, extension of the sidewalk lifting contract. And that is an extension with level right concrete.
Yes, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one twenty-five as presented, authorizing the extension of the sidewalk raising program contract with level right concrete through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I would like to applaud Public Works for taking this and along with the other item later on in the agenda, sidewalk replacement, taking such a strong lead on these items. These items seem relatively minor, but again, they do improve the safety and the appearance of the town Munster. I do appreciate them doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Counselor Gardner. All right, any further discussion? Mrs. Miss?
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Item number eight, resolution twenty-one twenty-six, a resolution authorizing an interim town manager.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve a resolution twenty-one twenty-six. This is a resolution authorizing an interim town manager.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
President, I make a motion to amend the resolutions presented. Specifically, I move to amend the motion as follows. In section three, paragraph two, subparagraphe A, B, C, D, and E, in each of those paragraphs, it speaks to the council president being informed or being approving certain actions. I would move to amend by striking out the words council president and replacing them with the words town council.
Okay. We'll need this to be a separate vote, is that not correct?
You need a second first.
All right, we have a motion, we'll need a second.
And I'll further illustrate what this does. In subpar-
Do we need to have a second to start the discussion, or is this? Okay.
For example, subparagraph A, employees classified as seasonal employees can describe under sections seven and eight under ordinance nineteen twenty-six. The two thousand twenty-four salary ordinance will be hired and terminated with the council president being informed of such action. The motion to amend replaces council president with the town council being informed after such action is taken. And that similar change occurs in all the other sections. And the entire council is advised of this matter, not just the council president. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
It's a minor thing. I have confidence that our president would tell us when this would happen, so I don't think it's a necessary amendment, but if if I, I don't think the interim town manager has any issue with this view. Okay. But if we need-
And we're gonna have the council vote on anything anyway.
No more discussion.
All right, no more discussion. Mrs. Miss, would you please call the roll on this modification amendment?
Just to start adding, I'm still making notes, okay. Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. So that takes us back to the main resolution of twenty-one twenty-six, authorizing an interim town manager. You have a motion?
I think it's already moved.
Peter, are you interested whether you have any discussion on the motion that now, the resolution that now meant? On the resolution that's now amended?
Correct.
We have a motion by Counselor Gardner and seconded by Counselor Hopper, that it's been amended.
Okay.
I do have, I do have a discussion. I think when we're looking at this town, this program description of Tom Andrew, February two thousand and one, I think it does underscore the the need for us to really review our employee job descriptions throughout the town, throughout the whole town. When we're looking at the two thousand and one is the last job description we can find. So I would welcome the opportunity while we're doing it, while we're discussing if we're going to do a search or not for the town manager. There's been other discussions with regards to salaries, personnel. And I would also highly recommend that we certainly look at position descriptions and job descriptions as this examples here from this town manager, and also some of the benefits that are in the interim town manager's resolution that I think for all our employees, we're a little bit behind the current times. So I would just make that comment.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, are you ready?
I am ready. Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item F, continuation of the Home With Disposal Service contract. They have given us
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we approve the year four option from Home With Disposal Service at a rate of twenty dollars and seventy-five cents per household for a contract period of May first, two thousand twenty-four through April twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
It's April thirtieth.
April thirtieth.
Updated.
Oh.
After it was posted, it was updated.
Okay.
I apologize. Well, I'm in my home. Thank you. When I have the correct dates, then, thank you.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, questions? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Miss, please call the roll.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item G, approval of arborist services. We do have arborists that come around on request, request of the public works to take a look at trees and determine what needs to be done based on their inspection.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the arborist services proposal of harbor grain for the tree inspection and consultation services.
We have a motion, we have support.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, support. Any further discussion? And again, there were three vendors that were contacted on this. And again, there were three vendors that were contacted on this. Seeing no further discussion, Mrs. Miss?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to uh, item H. Yes. Approval of change order on the sidewalk program. And there's a memo here and J and J Newell invoice.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoice of J J Newell quoted square foot cost of ten dollars and forty cents for. Five inch thick regular sidewalks and eleven dollars for seven inch thick driveway sidewalks. At a total invoice of four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and one dollars and twenty four cents.
I'll second that motion.
And if I recall right, this is on the fifty fifty sidewalk program?
Yes.
So. I'm sure they got a lot of sidewalks done for that, and we also have a lot more in town to to work on, well, that's uh, see how we can fit that in.
Yes.
So, all right. Any, any other discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, please call the roll.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to uh, item I. And that is. The CCMG twenty twenty three uh, bid awards.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve milestone contractors Nori Inc. for a total of one million, three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred dollars for the CCMG two thousand twenty three dash two. Having and water main project as recommended by S E H.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
I would just like to um, kind of remind the residents, this is gonna be the second of our um, approaches to these CCMG projects that. Include some traffic calming devices, either speed bumps, chicanes, raised crosswalks. And what you'll see um, in this project, in this two twenty three dash two project, which will happen towards. Not immediately this year, but kind of towards the middle or end of this year, on Terrace Drive, um, there's some raised cross, crosswalks um. And and bump outs, making the streets a little bit smaller so we can slow down traffic, uh, Forest and Timmerick will also be getting some of those items. Um. What you'll see, I'll I'll address uh, Mr. Sarcevich, I apologize for the name, uh, at a red pronunciation. Uh, Azalea Drive will be receiving some uh, traffic calming devices this year coming up. Uh, chicanes, which is kind of a bump out at the at the intersections, uh, and Oriole Drive uh. Around Azalea will be sitting in some raised crosswalks, which kind of doubles as a um. Speed bump, but a raised crosswalk, so I think this is something that Public Works has done a good job in the past year. Um, to really look at these areas, uh, we are concerned about traffic in the neighborhoods. We can't put all that emphasis on the on the police department to patrol every street in town. Uh, quite, quite frankly, a lot of times, speed is a result of how streets are designed. And by us reducing some of these streets, including some of the raised crosswalks, uh, we're trying to reduce the speed in the subdivision, so. It's it's a point well taken, and we're not done with it, we're gonna continue to do this, but this is uh, part of this, and as we approve this project tonight. Uh. Please be assured that we are looking at primary news speed in the neighborhoods when we renew these streets.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to weigh in as well, um, I am, I will be voting in favor of this because I think. The community crossing match and grants are an important component of municipal funding. And I, in broad strokes, I support the efforts of the Public Works Department to obtain this, but at the same time. I am concerned, and I want to make sure that a broad cross section of the community have weighed in on these devices. Uh, these are permanent devices for many instances, they are not temporary, and they can have significant impact. On uh, the way people come into and out of their subdivisions, so. I I'm offering and encouraging Public Works to make sure that there is a wide swath of the community that is rolled in to these decisions. Before these permanent changes occurred.
Yeah.
Any other discussions?
Mr. President, if I could ask the Public Works Director, uh, not tonight. Uh, but if we could review, uh, I think there was a number of surveys and things like that that were done along uh, Timmerick. And if we could um. Make sure that we, for Mr. Peterson, so really redo this, because I think this is a concern. And I do want to make sure that this is, like you're saying, Council Peterson, um. Needed and wanted throughout the community, so, thank you, I I do think there was some surveys done recently, and I think we can have to redo those.
Speed team normally sends people out prior to any uh, modification to the roadway. They get the residents in that block or stretch road. Chief best.
Thank you. And again, if we can just, the the speed team is, it's a combinations of parts, correct?
Correct, chief.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, would you call the roll?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item J. And the public works is to purchase, would like to purchase two new fuel pumps, gas and diesel, which is scheduled for replacement here in twenty twenty four. In line with the street division five year capital improvement plan. So, looking for a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two fuel pumps, gas and diesel in the amount. Twenty six thousand, two hundred and fifty eight dollars and eighty cents from B M K Equipment, a down payment of thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty four cents.
Thank you.
I could then report.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Just again, to clarify, these pumps are located down at Public Works. This is where the town vehicles go to receive their fueling. They have a program that tracks who's there, which vehicle, which uh, individual is filling up. And it's. It's good to update those pumps and have a, have new ones to be able to handle both our gasoline and diesel fuels.
I chuckle because they are quite old.
Well, they're not the pump, the the prank ones with the glass are, they're.
They're pretty darn close.
Some close. All right, seeing no further discussion, Mrs. Miss, please call the roll.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. Item number K is purchase of the fuel monitoring system.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the fuel monitoring, monitoring system in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and seventy two dollars from B and K Equipment.
I'll second that motion.
And this is in conjunction with the fuel pumps. Any further discussion? Uh, Mrs. Miss?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item L. And that's for the purchase of an asphalt roller. The uh, town Public Works does quite a bit of patching here in town. And uh, this piece of equipment would help roll those asphalt lays down and improve operation.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of a new grow mag asphalt roller from a cane with a source wall price of forty two thousand, eight hundred and seventy eight dollars. And a minus the trade ins of six dollars, the final price of thirty six thousand, eight hundred and seventy eight dollars.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item M, the builder's risk insurance. Uh, this is with the. With the construction going on at the new pro shop at Centennial Park.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the binding of coverage for the builder's risk policy, the signing of your no known loss letter and the payment of the premium in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety eight dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, please call the roll.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item N, approval of the third party liability claims administrator's fees.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the pricing and signature by the council president for the twenty twenty four liability program, third party claims administrator Gallagher Bassett.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item O, engagement letter for lobbying services.
Mr. President, can we skip that?
You've got N as the approval of third party liability, O is the lobbying services?
We did N.
We we.
We said N.
Have, have, and we've done both of those?
Yes.
To builder's risk?
No, that's okay. I've been known to skip things before. All right, that takes us up again to item O. Which is a letter of engagement for lobbying services, and that's with Barnes and Thornburg in Indianapolis.
Mr. President, I, I'm gonna come back, I'm not sure that we covered this, this is a voice vote to approve third party claims administrator Gallagher Bassett? I don't think we've done that.
Councillor Hopper and Councillor um, Gardner made the motion and seconded it before zero.
And I know it's tight in some of these, the voice vote, when we do vote call.
With the builder's risk? Councillor Hopper, Councillor Gardner, and third party.
Okay, very good.
So we have a lobbyist Barnes and Thornburg that. monitors things for us down in Indianapolis and bringing up items that we feel necessary or need to uh, make our voice turn.
I'd like the motion to authorize the council president to sign a letter of engagement with Barnes and Thornburg for legislative lobbying services.
We have support?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? Mrs. Miss?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That uh, takes us up to item P. And that's approval of a contract. With um. To pay your ambulance service for our canine veterinary side.
This is P.
This, no, no, this is which?
Yes, this has been updated.
Okay.
Are you?
I I'm sorry.
There was a placeholder in there for something for the fire department, we got pulled.
Okay, my apologies.
So that may be what's causing confusion.
Okay.
So we're, we're good with item P?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I, no, no, it's, it's.
There's an, there's an item taken, there's an item taken off the agenda after I put my board package together.
Yeah. It, yes, it was missing the agreement, the agreement came late this morning, early this morning, took it. And didn't have. So now we're on, we're on approval for contract for canine veterinarians services. This is from the police department, it was presented at Thursday's Board of Safety meeting, and so. Speaking from the police station, but.
Speaking, uh, pursuant to Indiana Code sixteen thirty one thirteen one, they changed state law to allow. Entire consequences to transportation of wounded canines by ambulance. Uh, as a result of that law change, we entered into agreement with Superior Ambulance, God forbid we ever need to transport one of our canines by ambulance. Uh, there's agreed upon fee of nine hundred dollars that will be paid from the town to Superior Ambulance for the transporter that came then. Just hope we never need it.
Absolutely, but it's something that you should have in place, because unfortunately, if it were to happen, that's too late to have arrangements made.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, I would authorize the town council president, Dave Allenz, to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Superior Ambulance Service. To supply life saving care and transportation to Munster Police Department's canine if required.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss, please call the roll.
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item Q. The police take home vehicles.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Munster Police Department to order thirteen Ford interceptors and seven Ford F F one fifties. From Bloomington Ford through the state of Indiana purchasing, state of Indiana quality purchasing agreements. For a total price including equipment to be installed for patrol readiness. Of one million, eight hundred and ninety six thousand, hundred and twenty dollars, not including any potential trade ins.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, discussion?
How, I think. Part of this, uh. How are we, what is the timeline for putting like policies and procedures in for uh, the care and control of the cars and also um. Some of the policies with regards to actually the police department?
So those policies are already rough drafts, as the workflow for that will be going to the Board of Safety originally. Where that will be fleshed out. Uh, then the original, once those agreements are fleshed out, then it will come to the council. But we're looking now, because we have a window to order these vehicles. Uh, we don't have to pay for them till they, we've received the vehicles, so we're just looking now, planning on down the road when they arrive.
It, it mentions a little bit about the lead time, do you have any more clarification on lead times with these vehicles?
I would defer to Lieutenant Roman who handles our lead.
There's a lot of different things that go into it because of Ford has another layoff, um, that's going to probably be a little bit later, but it would be farther into the year. July, August, September, probably when they start coming to.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know if everyone heard that Lieutenant Roman was talking about. Ford and then delivery, and there may potentially be a strike, layoff, or shortage of parts or whatever. So that we're looking at these units not being here till July, August, September, uh, they may come in dribbles. It's with the supply chain, uh, vehicles have been very difficult to come by. We just purchased the last meeting, paid for it, a dump truck that was ordered a year ago. So there's some long lead times and. I applaud the the different groups of the town here to take a look at that and anticipate their needs well in advance. Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Miss?
Councillor Hopper?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Peterson?
Yes.
Councillor Allenz?
Yes. That takes us up to item R. I don't have confirmation that we have. The uh. Individuals looking to appoint on this in place. Mrs. Miss, do you have anything? Miss Abbott. All right, I'm gonna. Ask that we pull this. Until I have the information or.
Mister, Mister President, I'll move to table this in the next meeting.
Second.
All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Again, this is an important group that, that meets time to time to review any unsafe buildings that we have in town. And I just want to make sure we have that all together. Are there any reports to be presented tonight? Saying on, um portfolio reports. I just wanted to mention that uh Counselor Gardner and I attended the uh Lake County Solid Waste Meeting this past Thursday. And uh they are well underway with their operations, uh their building is, uh it's a nice place to meet since they. Moved from the uh county auditorium, and there was a. I'd say there was a good attendance, you say?
I would say so for Gardner.
And uh it was a well-run meeting, and uh. They'll be working on the different assignments, uh they do have their education program well in place. And uh. Everything went well. Any other? Reports?
I would just make an announcement that the R D A Transit Development District Steering Committee, of which I've been appointed to serve on, is meeting on a uh. Committee meeting on this Thursday, I believe it's eleven o'clock via Zoom.
All right, anything else? Under announcements, all town council meetings will begin at seven P M unless otherwise noted. The uh March fourth, twenty twenty four will be the regular town council meeting and the regular redevelopment commission meeting that evening. With that, I'm looking for adjournments, so move. Motion. Second, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, and we'll be going into the redevelopment commission meeting there shortly.
For those students that need to take a picture or anything, this next week goes approximately two to three minutes, and then we'll be done, and then you can take pictures, whatever else you need.
I don't, it's like, uh. Yeah, all right, uh. We'll follow the redevelopment meeting's order. Miss, would you uh call the roll?
Commissioner Shinkin, Commissioner Hopper, Commissioner Gardner.
President.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Downs.
Friend.
And school board liaison, John Kettrell.
President.
The uh same comments stand for this meeting and the town council meeting for public comments, is there anyone that might come forward? And make a public comment for the redevelopment commission? Okay, we're in the open of the public session with regards to the redevelopment submission, is there anyone that would like to come forward and speak? Saying now, we'll close the open of the public session, that takes us to the consent agenda.
Mister President, I would move and accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Make a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Mrs. Miss.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Downs.
Yes. We have no old business, no new business, no reports, no announcements, I'm looking for an adjournment, so move. Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, that, that concludes it.
Very good, any of the students that need to take pictures up here, just come right up here, feel free to take pictures and uh take your report.
We know, same. I think that we've already done in town wood, and then.